November eighteenth, uh, meeting of the Planning Board of Appeals and the zoning board, uh, which is being conducted for, uh, on Zoom. Present, I'd like to introduce those members of the board who are present as well as our support staff. Um, I'm present, Lisi Kishite. I'm the chairperson of the board. David Collins is our vice chair. He's present. George Alzabak is present. He's a voting member. Uh, Wendy Taylor Humphrey is here uh, as a voting member and uh, Jennifer Hilton is our first alternate and will be voting tonight. And Joel Bishop is our alternate who will not be voting, but is our oral member. Um, present, also our attorney, Mark Mars, uh, Michael Marcello and uh, Julie Barrett is our administrative um, assistant. Is Bill Moore, are you here?
He is.
Bill is here, okay.
Yes, I am.
And Sally Ferrera is our stenographer. So I think, uh, it makes sense to proceed to the Planning Board of Appeals, um, agenda. And uh, that is an appeal that's been submitted through Northborough Realty Holdings LLC for Courthouse Square, Chelmsford, Mass. at nine ninety-four and one thousand Main Street. ID numbers one nine, one one nine dash one twenty-two and one one nine dash one twenty-one respectively. Appealing, uh, Tiverton Planning Department Administrative Officer's decision denying their request for administrative approval of a change to their site plan. Petitioner contends that the change is minor and that, and necessary due to regulatory changes by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for stormwater management facilities. And the appeal has been filed under Article thirteen, Appeal Section twenty-three dash seventy-eight, right of appeal of the Tiverton Municipal Code. And I should also add that our um, administrative officer and town planner, uh, Jennifer Siciliano is present as well. And if I've left anyone out, um, I'm sure Mr. Marcello will advise me to state, state so. Did I leave any?
No, just for the record, Doug, Mr. Dorsey, uh, it, it just made more from a procedural perspective to, to go forward with the appeal first because depending how the appeal goes, it would, its special use permit may become a moot issue at some point, at least in the future.
I didn't realize that Mr. Dorsey was, was, uh, I thought Mr. Russo was representing the petitioner.
Infirm.
Okay, um, well.
John, do you have an objection with that, John?
We don't have an objection to that.
Okay, alright, so go ahead, go ahead Chair, I'm sorry.
Well, is, uh, Mr. Dorsey's representing, uh, the appellant on the Planning Board of Appeals matter?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dorsey, I can't see you. I don't know where you are, so, um, go ahead, wherever you may be.
Are other members able to see me? I just want to make sure I'm just coming through. Good, good evening, Madam Chair, thank you. My name is John Dorsey. I'm here on behalf of Northborough Realty Holdings LLC on the appeal from the Planning Office, um, request for an administrative approval. By way of brief background for, for the board's benefit, this project involves a two parcel land development project. It was a fifty-two unit residential development that was planned and approved. One lot was a residential lot, which was designed to accommodate the residential buildings. The second lot was a commercial lot that was designed to accommodate the stormwater requirements for the project. By way of procedural history, in two thousand six, the project was granted a special use permit by the zoning board. Subsequently, in two thousand seven, the zoning board determined that the project had exercised its special use permit. In two thousand eight, the Planning Board granted a final plan approval. That final plan approval did envision that there would be some modifications or potential modifications to the stormwater designs that have been presented. Um, specifically, the approval provided that all stormwater drainage facilities required by the plan for the entire site of Bayview Condominiums will have been installed in accordance with the plans or any approved modifications there too. Um, subsequent to that two thousand eight approval, in light of the economic downturn, the project utilized the tolling statute for the approvals that had been granted. Subsequently, in two thousand eighteen, Northborough's engineers re-engaged with the Department of Environmental Management um, to, to have further discussions regarding the stormwater permit. In the meantime, DEM stormwater regulations had substantially changed. Those changes required a stormwater management system that would occupy more than fifty percent of the commercial, uh, development lot. And because of the location of that stormwater design, which was initially planned as a below-ground design, it would have burdened a hundred percent of the commercial lot. Northborough's engineers also proceeded in discussions with, um, the towns' engineers and came up with a proposed plan for those stormwater, uh, utilities. The town at that point found the plans as had been prepared as acceptable. There was then an application made to DEM. DEM required, um, after an initial review of the plans, an enlargement of the stormwater area even beyond that, which had been designed between the, the town and the project. Uh, because of the extent of stormwater management that was required, uh, that stormwater design utilizing an underground utility was not practical. It required more, uh, pre-treatment. In addition, it required a larger area. Eventually, because of the size of the area that was, would have needed to have been utilized, a below-ground design was not practical and therefore an above-ground design utilizing detention basins was, uh, proposed to DEM and ultimately that, that revised plan was approved by DEM. With DEM's approval, Northborough is now back before this board, both in terms of a request for a, what we've asked for as a minor change approval by way of the final plan. Uh, we had submitted the administrative request for an approval. In addition, there is, um, the second agenda item that we have pursuant to the special use permit. We were also required to come back to the board to ask for a request to approve the change pursuant to the special use permit. There, there were several issues that we've outlined in our submissions to the board. I don't know if the board wants to ask specific questions or if it would be more beneficial for me to address those issues, um, in, in any particular order, but I'm, I'm happy to address, uh, the issues that were previously raised.
I have some questions. Um, the commercial lot, sorry, the commercial lot you're talking about, um, fronts on Route, uh, one thirty-eight, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry. Goodbye, dogs. Very sorry about that interruption. Um, and the, um, initial plan for the underground stormwater, um, management system, uh, was on, on the residential lot and a small part of it was on the commercial lot. Is that correct?
That, that is not correct. The initial stormwater designs for this project had the entirety of the, uh, stormwater drainage situated upon the commercial lot.
But it was underground?
Initially, it was planned as underground. That's correct.
Okay, because the, one of the maps that, could you show me on the original plan where, where the, uh, original, um, uh, underground system was envisioned on, on the, between the relative, um, uh, commercial and residential lot?
We have a.
You have a, do you have that map?
Yeah, we have.
I think that would be the two thousand eight, uh, plan, John.
Yeah, we're just, um, we can pull up an electronic version to share. Appreciate the board bearing with us. We'll, um, pull up a copy of the plan that we can share.
Mr. Dorsey, if I had to produce, produce a document on Zoom, I would be, uh, out barking in my yard with my dogs right now. Take your time.
John, we did get a brief, uh, the brief of your, with your, uh, with the tab. So if, if, if the people have the hard copy too, but I think it would be beneficial for everyone to see the same thing at the same time. So I don't know if you can refer to us to a, a tabbing, a brief?
The plan was submitted separately.
Okay. Wait, who said that? Uh, who said that? Said what? The plan was submitted separately.
That's my colleague, Matthew Cimental. The, we had submitted a copy of the plan separately from our papers. We should be able to, uh, share the screen here momentarily. Are the members able to see our screen?
Yes.
Yes. So if you're looking along the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the main road, right along the, that abuts the project. And then Matt, if you can take the cursor and just start to move it around the edge of the, um, commercial lot where the stormwater is, uh, is designed. So, so essentially, if the members of the board can see, there's a proposed property line, which is outlined on the, on the plan that we're sharing. That's the commercial lot, the boundaries of the commercial lot. Uh, the, both the initial stormwater design as well as the, uh, revised design that's being proposed, uh, were both situated within that parcel.
Okay, and was there any portion of this on the residential parcel?
There was not. The project was always envisioned that you would have the buildings being accommodated on the residential parcel and then you would have the stormwater management being accommodated on the commercial parcel.
Okay, and the, um, but, but this was going to be, the, uh, initial plan was for, for it to be underground, which would allow the commercial property to enjoy its, um, commercial use above ground.
Uh, either way, it wouldn't have allowed for that. Be, even with the initial, before DEM changed its regulations, the initial stormwater design that had the stormwater service below ground would have burdened the lot such that there was not going to be a, a traditional, there wasn't going to be building on, on the commercial. Since then, um, even with the expanded underground design that was prepared, again, that would have encumbered the entirety of the lot and would not have allowed for a traditional commercial design. Um, and the, the above-ground, um, detention basins like likewise don't accommodate a commercial design. So it, from the inception of this project, it was envisioned that the residential lot would house all the buildings, the commercial lot would house the stormwater.
You know, on one of the maps that was submitted in your package, there was an indication that there was an easement on the commercial property that was to be allowed. Uh, I can't see it on this because it's so small, um, but, uh, that envisioned a, an easement for, for the, access to the commercial parcel.
That was, there was on the plan that, that we're screen sharing. If you look towards the top of the screen, there's an indication, um, to allow for a utility and maintenance easement.
There was another, another map that you, was in our package that talked about an easement for commercial. I, and I, I could look for it in my package.
Well, this is Mike, if you go, if you go, if you go, there's an access road, John, on this map. Uh, north of what we've just showed there, there, it shows a cut, not cut, right there. See future connection, commercial property, see that? Proposed easement.
Right there. That's simply an access way to, to access the commercial property. It wasn't, and again, that's because there was going to be stormwater infrastructure on that parcel. But there was, there was never a design or, or any implementation of an easement that would allow access to that parcel for any other use. It was designed all along to house the stormwater facilities.
So, so John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I apologize. You, I was just gonna, for clarity, the only change between what was originally designed, planned and approved and what is before the board tonight is the stormwater infrastructure is being proposed to be changed from a below-ground, uh, stormwater infrastructure to the above-ground detention basins.
John, I thought on an earlier map, and I could be wrong, there, this, this is just the property line map, but where, where, where is the drainage plan map, uh, that, that, on the original approved plan by the planning board? Do you have that?
The original.
Yeah, it actually showed the galleys for, for the, uh, for the stormwater.
Do it, do it a copy, we can pull it.
Yeah, it's gonna take a minute.
Yeah, we, we can pull that up in screen share.
And John, just so, for the record's clear, because I know this is being, it's not gonna, what, how can we identify that on the map that you just showed the board?
The site plan. That map will identify as a site plan.
Somebody have a TV or something in the background that could shut that off, please?
What do you mean? I appreciate the board bearing with us. We're just locating the, the plan that, uh, Mr. Marcello had referenced and then we'll screen share it. Mike, you should be able to see on our, uh, screen share here the plan. And I'm not, I, I think this is the plan that you're referring to, but if you want to take a quick look and make sure we grab the one that you're referencing.
I think that's the one that I was thinking about.
Well, it said proposed permanent utility and maintenance easement.
And, and John, do you see, I, I guess my question for the benefit of the board, there's a property line that runs right, I, I'm looking at three galleys, okay? And it looks like they're, the proposed property line, so it's one, two, three galleys in between the second and third galley. And I don't know if you call it a galley because I'm not an engineer, but that's what we're gonna call it. So you see where the, the word is proposed property line? So from, and then tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it, it looks like there are two galleys on the commerce, on the residential lot and only one galley on the, um, commercial lot.
Right.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I see, I see where you're talking about there.
That's, that, and that's the map that I had to question about as well.
And it said proposed permanent, further to the right from the hand, it said proposed permanent utility and maintenance easement.
And just, uh, just so that I can get the record to be clear. And, uh, so this was, this was the original, uh, proposed plan that was approved by the planning board with the drainage plan as shown on this map. Am I correct in that, John, or am I incorrect?
That, that was the original approved, uh, drainage plan.
Okay, thank, thank you.
And your new plan, can I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
So the new plan, you move in this whole operation or this whole new system required just into the commercial site, right?
That's the, both, the underground design plan that had been worked through with the towns' engineer as well as the proposed above-ground detention basins are both within the commercial property. That's correct.
Question?
Yes, of course, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand where we're headed here. It seems to me that what we're trying to decide is whether or not this is a minor change or a major change. Is, is that the issue?
That, that's, there were three principal issues that, that were raised to us in, in our requests and that was, that was the main issue. There were two other issues, um, that I, but I think the main issue is whether this is considered a minor or a major, um, change. And if it, if it pleases the board, I can address Northborough's position on that.
Okay, Michael, what, what standard do we use here?
Well, it would be if there was a clear error, I believe if there's a clear error of, of law, uh, or, or by the, by the, uh, administrative officer. If we're going to get to that standard though, I do, I do have a couple of questions for John, that I wanted to bring up because he does, John, why don't you make your argument and, or you're pointing out and then that may lead to some other questions.
Can I ask one question before we go any further? Just a clarification.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Is this, this, from what I understand from your open statement, that the fact this here was imposed on you by DEM?
That, that's cor, that's correct. This, the plan that was approved by DEM and the permit was issued for was a result of, um, you know, further requirements under DEM stormwater regulations.
And that's changes from two thousand six to till now, that's the changes?
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorsey. Why don't you make your argument?
With respect to whether the board considers this a, a, a minor or a major, um, change, our position is, is that it's a minor change. There's, there's not a definition within the towns' regulations as to what constitutes a minor change. Um, we did cite in our papers, there's a number of other municipalities in the state that have deemed modifications pursuant to RIDM requirements or approvals as minor changes. It makes sense because the legislative, um, history behind DEM is that DEM has been granted with the, the duty for both development and planning of natural resources, including stormwater regulations. And again, in, in this project, it, it makes sense because you have a situation where the stormwater infrastructure has been planned for this commercial lot. Um, it, it's not a situation where there wasn't stormwater planned on the commercial lot. All along, there was an element of stormwater planned for the commercial lot. Um, so the change from DEM requiring it to go from below-ground to above-ground from Northborough's standpoint is a, a minor change.
John, we can take this map off for a second. I, I just have a question on that, unless the chair has a question.
I didn't have a question right now. Did anybody else have a question?
So, John, the, the confusion part, uh, that I'd like you to address if I could, if you could, uh, is I read your brief on the, uh, definition of minor change. And it, minor change according to the Planning Board regs, minor change is defined in the local regulations to a land development or subdivision plan. And here's the operative word from my perspective, is may be approved by the administrative officer and Planning Board Chairman, whereupon a plan may be recorded. The changes may be authorized without additional public hearings at the discretion of the administrative officer and Planning Board Chairman. All changes shall be made part of the permanent record of the project application. The provision does not prohibit the administrative officer from requesting a recommendation from an ad hoc technical review committee. Uh, denial of the proposed change shall be, uh, referred to the Planning Board for review as a major change. Now, I guess my first question is, is that there's nothing in our regulations and I, there's nothing in our regulations that does, that does define minor change and I, I, I will concede that. But there's nothing in these regulations that says that the administrative officer shall approve what he or she considers a, a minor change. It seems to me that even under the root regulations, as we, as, as been cited in your brief, that the administrative officer has a lot of discretion as to whether or not this would go back before, whether he or she would approve it administratively or at, at her discretion, uh, with the approval of the Planning Board Chairman, send it back to the Planning Board for, for the hearings. I, I, if you could address that, that's what I'd like to hear.
Well, I, I think it's a procedural question that the towns' regulations do allow the administrative officer to, to make that decision. And once that request is made, I, I do think the, the Planning Office is compelled to give the applicant some decision. Um, and then we're, we're before the board on the appeal because it is, the office, the planning office did take action on our request by way of a denial. And so the towns', um, regulations authorize an appeal of that to, to this board. So that's, that, that's how we ended up here. I, I think this board is the appropriate board to be hearing, um, the denial.
Mr. Dorsey, my question is, do you feel that, 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 do you dispute that our regulations gives discretion to the administrative officer? Whether to send it back to the Planning Board at, at this point? Do you feel that she had, the, do you, don't you think that it says she has the discretion to send it back for, for the review?
At this point, I don't think that the Planning Office has that discretion. I think if the Planning Office had taken that position, we would have responded. But at this point, we've made the application and the Planning Office has issued a denial pursuant to the town regulations, I think we're compelled to come to this board on appeal.
Okay.
So if we concur with the planner, then what that means is that they have to go back to the Planning Board for a major change?
Either that or the, the applicant would have to consider whether or not to, to appeal a decision of, of this board to the superior court. And I, I, I'm prepared to address the, the comments from the Planning Office, but procedurally, that, that would be the, the vehicle.
I've been so, and Jennifer is from the planning board? Or from the planner? Can we ask her? Could she say anything or not yet?
Not yet, but she, she will be out. I don't know if John is, John, John, if you want to go through more, go ahead.
Sure, well, let, let me address the issues that were raised to us in the denial. The, the first issue that was raised to us in the denial was, um, that the applicant would need a new special use permit. Uh, we've taken the position that we don't need a new special use permit because the project was deemed to have exercised the original permit back in two thousand and seven, which is when the rights under that permit would have vested. I, I don't know that that's an issue tonight. We've provided that response. Um, I, we may be past that. Um, in addition, we were advised that there would be a requirement to merge the lots. Um, this project was approved by the town as a two, two-lot development, was it, when it was initially approved. It was also approved by DEM as a two-lot project that's referenced in the exhibits, um, that we've provided to the town. It's in Exhibit H of the appeal package. DEM's approval specifically cites to the project as a two-lot development. So at this point in trying to merge the lots would be the imposition of an additional contingency and it would be a major change to the prior approval. Um, there was not a contingency of the final plan approval from the Planning Board. So tho, those were the two other issues beyond the minor versus major change question that we addressed.
Like, John, I just, just want to get, um, based upon the regulation, and I just, see if, the way I read the, the, the regulation of a minor change, even a minor change at the, whether it's minor or ma, minor, whether it's major or minor, um, the, the plant, the administrative officer has the discretion to send it back to the, uh, Planning Board for a further review. Do you agree or disagree with that based upon the wording of the regs?
In terms of where we are procedurally at this point, I disagree with that. I think the, the Planning Office has taken a, we've made an application. The Planning Office did not decide whether or not the regulations allow for it to make a referral to the Planning Board. We were issued a denial. That denial is now before this board on appeal.
And, and the, and the, the basis of the denial that she believed that it was major and because she believes it was major, it goes back to the Planning Board anyway, right?
I don't believe that that goes back to the Planning Board, no, that the denial.
You don't think they're not, but, okay. Well, if, if the appeal was to be upheld, it would go back to the Planning Board.
If it was upheld as a major, a major change.
They're not denied, I'm sorry, denied.
Yeah. If we need to go to the Planning Board, we go, we'd be going to Superior Court, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think, um, unless anyone has, we can go back and forth with John, but I, I think it might be appropriate to, um, have the planning off, the administrative officer describe, uh, why she, why, why the application for, uh, administrative approval was not approved by her.
I just have one other, before we do that, um, I had a question for Mr. Dorsey and that is that, um, there seemed to be some que, some suggestion in your paperwork that, uh, the town comprehensive plan was different in two thousand eight than it is um, today or, you know, two thousand fourteen. And it's my understanding that, that, that strip, that commercial strip was always deemed commercial, under both the earlier plan and the current plan. Do you dispute that? Under both the earlier plan and the current plan. Do you dispute that?
No, we don't dispute that there is a commercial element, but we, the project was approved under the prior comprehensive plan. So that the point in our papers is that we have a final plan approval, which was granted under the comprehensive plan, which was in place at that point in time. We, looking at the current comprehensive plan would, would not be applicable in this instance. If, if there were, it would apply to the prior comprehensive plan.
No, I, 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 I understand that, but my, my question is, the commercial nature of the, that strip hasn't changed from when the plan was approved to the present time. Do you agree with that statement? I mean, there was some suggestion that there was a different plan in effect in 2008.
We don't dispute that that parcel was commercial, but in the planning office's decision, they're relying upon the current comprehensive plan for some of the pedestrian walkway and the types of usages that are being cited. And that part of it is, is not appropriate as that's not consistent with the prior comprehensive plan.
Okay. If you want to, um, Mr. Marcelo, you think it's appropriate for, um, our town planner? To weigh in on this?
Yeah, and, and just for the benefit of the board, it's in your packet, that the town planner's, uh, uh, letter of September 28th, 2022, uh, Mr. Russo is the, is the basis of this appeal.
So my question is, is it appropriate to hear from her at this point?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, um, Mr. Russo asked me in his letter, if I could administratively, okay, this minor, what he's considers a minor change. And according to the regulations, that not only my, the administrative officer, which is what I am, and the planning board chair, which is, um, Susan Gill, needs to authorize, um, can make those changes. So, um, not only would, uh, a minor change need to be, uh, approved by myself, uh, it would need to be approved by the planning board chair. Um, so since both of us need to do it, um, I just, um, wrote the letter for myself as the administrative officer that I believed that the change was a major change rather than a minor change. And, uh, I can share my screen and show you the drainage which, um, John Dorsey showed. Uh, my picture might show it uh, better how it's only a very tiny portion of the commercial lot.
We're gonna have to, we're just gonna have to identify this too for the record, so.
So, um, you can see, uh, that main road.
Could you identify what the document is that you're referring to for the record?
Um, it is the final plan submittal for Bayview, uh, 994 to 1,000 Main Street sheet C2 grading and drainage plan. Um, so this is their drainage plan. You can see, uh, Main Road. Um, and you can see the large, um, commercial property. I think you can see the line where it is located.
That would be the black squares in the line that connects those black squares?
Yes, the black squares. Yes, that is the commercial lot.
Can you use a cursor or can you use a cursor? Yeah, I think so.
Um, you know what, me, I might draw on it. So is the commercial lot. Do you see that? This is the commercial lot?
Yes.
And then this is the drainage, this tiny piece over here. And you can see that most of the lot is, uh, free. Um, I can show you the, uh, the more current map. Can you see that?
No, we're not yet. We're still seeing the old.
You're still seeing the old?
Try stop, try, um, to stop your screen share and then start it back up.
Okay. Oh boy. Oh, stop screen share. Okay. All right. Now I will. Okay. So.
First of all, why don't you identify this, what this map is?
Sure. Um, this is a map of the former plan uh, that the planning board office got in 2018, October. Um, that they, uh, that the applicant had gone to DEM with. And let's see if I can make it a little smaller so you can see the whole thing. I don't want to make it too small, but you can, so I'll, I'll draw on the brush again. Um, so this is the commercial lot and you can see that the underground drainage is much larger. Um, then I believed, uh, they had gone to DEM and DEM uh, changed it from this large underground, uh, drainage to above ground. Um, so that was the change, but, um, they were the one that proposed using the whole commercial lot for this underground drainage. Um, so in my letter, I actually suggested, suggested, I, I didn't actually, I denied that it was a minor change, but I gave him the option of, um, that I believed it was a major change and that it should go to the planning board. So I didn't deny his change. I denied that I thought it was a major, that, that it was a minor change. Um, so let's see, anything else I wanted to say? Um, so he actually would have had the option of putting the stormwater drainage on the residential property uh, and possibly made less lots to conform with DEM to get a DEM permit. Uh, DEM uh, didn't ask them to change the stormwater and put it all on the, um, commercial lot. And by doing that, um, you're making the commercial lot unbuildable for a commercial lot. And I am not sure that the planning board back, um, in 20, 2008, uh, would have approved this project if they knew that the commercial lot, which was proposed to be a, a future commercial property and developed, that they would have okayed that. Um, so I said, I don't think it's minor. Um, you should go to the planning board. That's pretty much it.
Ask questions?
George?
So I, uh, I'm honestly, I follow your thoughts, but I'm having a lot of problems with it. So the people who will lose in this proposed new change at them. The commercial property that they could have sold, um, built who knows what on it. They say, we're no longer going to use that commercial property. We're only going to use it to retain water that DEM approves it. It seemed like we so hung up on a major or minor changes compared to they're not, they really were asked by DEM to do it. And you're going back thinking about what 2006 possibly planning board was thinking, not to what this project in front of you are saying. They use the commercial property. So why we care? Why do you care?
Well, uh, because the, the comprehensive town plan says it should be used for, for, for commercial purposes. And the question that I had was, does DEM prohibit underground, um, stormwater management service, uh, you know, systems generally under the current regulations?
They do not.
Okay. And I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so right now, uh, there is a development that has DEM approval that has underground storage right now in, in Tiberton. So you don't, they do not require that.
So the plan that DEM approved was a plan that was submitted by the petitioners, engineers, and it was their decision to locate it on the commercial lots.
Yes.
I mean, DEM didn't say you can't put it anywhere else on the residential parcel. Is that, is that fair?
Correct.
Okay.
But by, by who, by who's saying that though? So how do we know what DEM said to them or not?
Well, the point is that DE, that, that the petitioner was the one that submitted the plan with the up, above ground management system on the commercial lot. So they didn't tell them, put it there. They were saying, yeah, that complies with um, our current regulations. Am I getting this remotely correct?
That's how it works. That's how the applicant submits the plan to DEM and then they approve it and work with the applicant to figure out the best plan, but the applicant definitely proposes.
I know, but they denied the first, they denied the first proposal they had in 2006. That BM said that plan does not work anymore or doesn't fit anymore, our regulation. You need to come up with new plans. They didn't scrap the 2006 before because they felt like it, unless I'm misunderstanding.
But most of the time.
No, no. The question is that they scrapped that on their own or was it asked to? The 2006 proposal.
Okay, so this is how it works.
John, John, John Joyce is the best person to answer that question. So.
Okay. The, the 2006 stormwater design no longer complies with DEM's rules and regulations. So the, the applicant was compelled to provide DEM with a supplemental proposal. The Northborough and the towns engineers worked together to come up with the stormwater design that was situated on the commercial lot and was below ground and, and the towns engineer in fact indicated that they had no objection to that proposed underground design. The only time that the objection came to fruition was when, after the initial submission to DEM, when the design was then changed from below ground to above ground because of how extensive the stormwater drainage needed to be. Uh, that, that's the only time that there's been an objection. In terms of the type of use of that commercial lot, whether the stormwater is below or above ground, it, it is going to encumber the entirety of the lot. So the original plan that the towns engineers reviewed and indicated that they had no objection to, which provided underground stormwater. It, it's a little bit of a red herring to, to make the distinction between above or below ground stormwater treatment because either way, the commercial parcel is going to be burdened in some way, shape or form.
But it would have a, a different aesthetic look to, if you were driving down 138, whether it was below ground or above ground.
I don't know about aesthetics, but it actually provides more flexibility for the site under what the applicants, um, been approved for, for the stormwater. You, there was not going to be construction or development of that commercial site with the underground stormwater utilities. Having the above ground detention basin still leaves the applicant the ability in the future to decide if it wants to do other potential uses that it would be allowed to under the commercial regulations.
I guess my question is, is there a difference between whether something's completely underground or if something's not developed? Um, you know, on that lot, the commercial lot, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So the, um, Ripton's, to explain, um, the tolling legislation that made the approval still valid, uh, did not affect DEM. So, uh, in 2008, they, I believe that they had permission from DEM to do what they proposed to do, but then, um, because of tolling and because they waited to do the project, the permit from DEM was not valid. So they had to go back to DEM.
I'm sorry, are you saying that in 2008, there was a, they had a, a DEM plan for the underground one? Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
Yeah. Um, so I believe that they fulfilled DEM permits at the time. And then when it got to be, but that permit did not toll. So, um, their approval for final plan told all these years until 2017, um, but DEM permits did not toll. Um, so they had to, so they did not have a valid permit from DEM anymore. And that's why they proposed this new, um, uh, stormwater system.
Still, I'm, I'm still having a hard time understanding where did they go wrong? I mean, what, what's?
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask John, John, does this, the, does the new propos- what was the original proposal that was approved in 2008 by the planning board? Um, contemplate two separate lots of this subdivision and does the new plan because of the drainage, the drainage, the changes that were required, require you to have, to merge these two lots into one? Is that the intention of the applicant?
It was not the intention when the project was in, when the project was initially planned and approved, it was always intended to be a two lot development. And so that, that has remained consistent throughout.
Can I just stop you there though? Uh, if it's a two lot development, then is it fair to say that there was a intention that that commercial lot would have been usable at some point? Because if it wasn't going to be usable other than just a place to dump water, they would have just kept it, made it one lot.
It's not. There was, as you saw in the plans, there was stormwater that was originally designed on that lot. And there was no commitment by the developer or any, any contingency included to, included with the final master plan that would provide for any type of development on that site. So the, the applicant certainly could have done nothing with that site beyond what was in the final plans. There was, there was no one, there was no intent or commitments from the developer's end or contingencies from the town end uh, with respect to that commercial lot, other than what was put forward in the, uh, final plans.
Uh, and other than the easement that was shown on the original plan to get to that, to get to that commercial lot. I, I guess my, my confusion is, John, if there was no intention to, to, to use that lot, why do you need an easement to get to it from the, from the residential?
It's an access easement.
I guess, but the other, the other part of my question was, John, uh, so under the new approved DEM plan, do the, do these lots become one? Do you, do these lots have to be administratively merged?
They do not have to be administratively merged. DEM that actually issued its permit based upon a two lot development. And if I, Mr. Solicitor, if I may, I did want to circle back to the, the question that you asked me with regard to, the, the minor versus major question, whether or not that should be properly submitted to the planning board. I think that the issue comes down again to the fact that there's not a definition of a minor. I think that the issue comes down again to the fact that there's not a definition of a minor land development or minor change in the regulations. If there, if there were, then that might provide more discretion. But where there's not a determination or a definition as to what is a minor change, that leaves a subjective standard as to what constitutes minor versus major, which is why I think this is appropriately before the zoning board for a determination of, was the rejection of a, a minor change appropriate?
Well, would you agree with me that even under the lack of a definition, even a minor change can be sent back to the planning board for further review?
I don't agree with that, and I don't think that you can make that determination without a definition of a minor change. Particularly in the backdrop of the scenario where you have DEM as a regulatory agency tasked with issuing the stormwater permit.
Can I ask Michael something?
Yes.
It see, Michael, we're trying to make this change fit into a definition that does not exist. We keep going back and forth over that same question. And we're trying to make this fricking applicant, sorry, I didn't mean to say that. This application fit into definition that does not exist because we do not like it. Definition does not exist. We cannot keep going back forth for the next 25 minutes, making it fit as something that does not exist. There's no such definition, and with all due respect to Jennifer, she took a step on something that she thought might have changed someone's attitude from 2008 or 2006. There's no such definition.
I, I, I'm only pointing out that even with the lack of definition, according to the regs, even if it were the minor change, the, the administrative officer still has the discretion to send it back. She does not have to approve what, the way I read the regulations in the board, you should, you should take a look at the regulation that's in the brief. You can disagree with me, but even, even under the, even without the minor def, even without the definition of minor, the administrative officer does, doesn't say shall approve, it says may approve. And, and there's a difference between may and shall, and she decided not to approve it, but sent it back to the planning board. That's all I'm, that's all I'm trying to point out. If, if, if the words, if the, if the regulation said shall approve, then I agree that there would be no discretion and that she would have to approve it. But the regulations say may approve. So she, uh, she has, you know, based upon my reading of the regulation, again, it's not my decision to make. But based upon my reading of the regulation, there's discretion there. And then she, whether it's minor or major, to my, to me is irrelevant. It's that she exercised her discretion and sent it back to the planning board.
And I, based on a minor, but she's, excuse me one second. Base, she's sending it back, I'm sorry, Jennifer, she's sending it back based on if it's minor or major. She's sending it back on a, on a position that it just doesn't exist.
Just, just for the sake of the record, I, the reason that I don't agree with, with the solicitor's position is the last sentence under section 23-50B provides a denial of the proposed changes shall be referred to the planning board for review as a major change. So I don't, I do want to make the record, but I don't want to belabor the point. I think the planner does have to make a decision, is it minor or not? And where you don't have a definition of what a minor change is, that's where the rub is, and that's why we're here.
Sir, and anything, anybody else have any questions of um, Jennifer or, um, petitioners, uh, petitioners counsel?
This is Kevin Gillis, the applicant speaking. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to clarify something with regard to Jennifer's letter of September 28th. The underground, larger underground storage that was approved by RITM and also approved by the town and referred to their engineers, where it was also as John has pointed, pointed out, would render the commercial, so-called commercial lot unusable. Subsequent change that was required by RITM to do with a much larger volume of water that upon review of off-site factors, uh, again, changed the design such that underground storage was not an option. Moving it on to the residential portion was not an option. It was totally unfeasible. Only a detention pond on the so-called commercial lot will work. Secondly, if you brought up the exhibit of the entire approved RITM stormwater management plan, you'll clearly see that in contravention to Ms. Siciliano's assertion in her letter that the stormwater management could be moved on the residential lot is completely impossible. Much of the residential portion is already in with stormwater detention ponds. Virtually, uh, every available spot is used for that. So that's just absolutely not feasible. And lastly, when the board approved the plan and originally approved the plan, the comprehensive, revised comprehensive plan for the town was not. So whatever they were contemplating for, uh, a commercial use was a fantasy on the part of the planning board. And whatever that changed to, when they approved their comprehensive change, once again, we're not bound to build anything. So for the planning board now to say, this is a major change because we can't get a commercial development that we may have contemplated at two different times, just, it doesn't seem to cut it. And that's all I had to add. Thank you.
The only thing that I, it's jumped out at me in your papers on page seven. The petitioner indicates that Rhode Island DEM required that the stormwater management facilities be further enlarged and provided for additional pretreatment, which effectively made underground placement impractical. But not, there's never any suggestion that it was not possible to put it somewhere else. And I think I'm having a problem with, with that leap. Are you following my line of thinking here?
I'm going to tell you that as a practical matter, it's impossible.
Impractical.
Well, what, what I would say to that is both North Borough's engineer and the towns engineer did spend considerable time looking at what the options for stormwater were. And based upon those discussions and a review of options in parallel with communicating with DEM, the plan always envisioned that the stormwater was going to be situated on the commercial parcel. It wasn't, if there, if there was a more feasible, practical way to put stormwater somewhere else, that certainly the towns engineer would have, uh, would have opined on that. But the town engineer, after working with our engineers, opined that what we had proposed for underground made more sense.
Thank you.
But the only difference is, is now because it's impractical to put something that substantial below ground, we're proposing it as above-ground detention basins.
So anybody else? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
Uh, I have a couple points. When, in state law, when I, I have the ability to, um, approve a administrative subdivision. And usually, and I may, if I feel that I want to bring it to the planning board, I can. And I, I believe that that is the same process here. Um, when it's a minor change, it's not just me that has to okay it. It also has to be okayed by the planning board chair. So, um, so even if you rule today that my, uh, that it, that my decision, uh, is not right, it still would not necessarily, uh, be determined between myself because it can't be just myself, it has to be myself and the planning board chair. So I just wanted to remind people that.
George?
Next question. Did you talk to the planning chair? It's, it's you and her. Did you talk to her about your response before you responded to that letter? Did you, did she have any input?
Um, I, I don't want to
Okay.
Talk for her because the letter was directed to me.
I know, but you, you just said it's not your only, it's not your decision only.
That's correct. So it's a consensus.
Right, so why, so why did you respond to them? You alone, before you talked to planning board chairman and they got, say by this step, she might have a different opinion or would have had a whole different meeting if that.
I do not believe that she has a different opinion.
Oh.
That, say that. And to, it, the letter was directed to the administrative officer. That is why I responded.
I don't want to sound like I'm attacking you.
Not to both of us.
I don't want to sound like I'm attacking you or anything, I'm just trying to.
Just clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, do the parties want to add anything else or does any member of the board have any questions? From our town planner or, um, Mr. Dorsey?
Nothing further from the applicant, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else, Jennifer? Okay, um, is it appropriate now to begin discussion about, um, the various issues that have been raised by, um, this appeal? I think that this is a pretty interesting issue. And I think that there are certain points that have been made by the petitioner that are extremely valid. That is, that, um, there is no definition of, of minor or major, um, change. But that I don't know if we really have to go there. I mean, I think the first thing we have to do is look at, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, um, our town solicitor. I think we have to look at the regulation and see whether or not the town admin, uh, the administrative officer has discretion uh, to, to send this back to the planning board because of subsequent changes in the, um, stormwater, um, management system that was proposed. I think that's the first thing that we need to look at and look at that language. And the second thing is that it's whether, I mean, we have, I don't think we have to decide whether it's ma, major or minor. But I think that there's practically a pretty big difference between an underground system that is, according to the maps that we looked at, was predominantly on the residential section versus a whole retention plan that uses, uses the top, top of the ground of a, um, commercial parcel that has been commercial and has been designated commercial, um, in our comprehensive town plan. So, I mean, factually, it seems like a major change. But I don't know how, how everybody else feels about this. I mean, um,
On it.
I certainly, given, given the, the complete change in what the zoning board looked at when it, uh, granted the special use permit and what the planning board, uh, approved, um, seems to be a whole different animal. I'd sort of like think that the, the planning board might want to go back and look at it and get public comment on it, but that's, that's just my opinion. I don't know how you feel, Dave. I wasn't on the board when you, I know you were the chair when this matter came before the, the board. So I don't know what was going on back then and what things you considered important. Maybe you could help us, um.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't really remember the details going back to 2009. But in my opinion, there, there hasn't been an area, error of law here. And that's our primary standard, as I understand it. Secondly, I believe the, the administrator has, has made a, a decision, a judgment call that is based on her expertise. And I'm not sure that we have the expertise to overturn here, her decision. Um, her decision is simply saying that the matter should go back to the planning board and let the entire planning board and with their expertise make a final decision. I, I don't think we need to decide whether or not any of the changes are, are major or minor. It's just, it's, it's her call, as far as I can see it. I, I don't think we can over, there's nothing that justifies overturning her, her decision, in my opinion.
Wendy, how do you feel about this?
Am I unmuted? Um, there's a lot that can be said about this, but I think it's all already been said. I, I have to be in agreement with, hold on, my dog is knocking me over. I have to, um, say that I'm in agreement with our solicitor. Uh, and a lot of the points that you made as well. Um, I think that counsel defining the new above-ground area on the commercial lot is just an element of the commercial lot. To lean it towards being a minor, uh, doesn't really ring true when we look at the plans that were given to us. Um, and he also mentioned that if there is no definition as to what constitutes a minor change, then it's subjective. And if it is subjective, then the standard should default to the, um, the planner. And it seems that it did. And it seems that she made the decision she made in her professional capacity. And I agree with David that I, I'm not sure that we're really in a position to know better than her or to second guess her decision. And like I said, there, there's a lot more that, that can be said, but I think it all already has been. And I, and I don't want to waste a lot of time repeating a lot of what has already been discussed. I mean, the, the term may versus the term shall. Anyone who's a lawyer knows that those two words could not possibly have more different definitions uh, than they do. Um, it is, there is a big difference between those two words, uh, and how they are looked at, um, in, in the legal world and in legalese. So I appreciate that distinction as well that was brought up by the solicitor. Um, I think I don't think anything was done incorrectly here.
Okay, um, Jennifer Hilton? How do you feel?
Completely agree with Wendy on this one. Um, on my notes, I wrote down may quotation marks and, and I really do think it, at this point, it's the discretion of the town planner and what she feels in her professional capacity as well. Because at the end of the day, we don't know what major and minor is. I mean, she's the town planner, she knows better. And on top of that, I mean, this is, it's quite a big, it's quite a big difference in aesthetics, but not so much in, um, functionality. Because being under, this is my other side of it. Being underground, the whole property is still being used. So it will never be a commercial property of substance. Um, however, it does change the aesthetics. It may change, um, the way the planning board feels about it. Um, it may change the way the town feels about it and how the town people feel about it. So I think it, it kind of does go back to the town plant, or the planning board to make a decision and hear the public out as well.
Thanks. George?
I feel like I'm, uh, in a different meeting. Just like a month ago, we had the same discussion about what the planning board knows. And we had a petition in front of us and we insist on making a decision that day because we know. And today, all of a sudden, we're deferring our decision to give them another bite on the apple. That's how I feel about this. They're not changing much, they're required to do it. It's total waste of money, time for the petitioner. Waste of time for everybody here, is my opinion. I totally disagree. She, as far, as far as I'm concerned, she's expert and I agree with that. I, I, I think this is just trying to get another bite at the project and see what we could change. I think it's total inappropriate, but seem like I'm going to be the only one on the island doing that, so I'm okay with it. I'm against it.
I don't disagree with you, George. I feel kind of torn about this one. I feel kind of torn about this one.
It's, Jennifer, they, we literally, a month ago, we're having the same discussion about the knowledge of planning board trying, and we approved.
I agree.
I spoke against it, I spoke against it then, that we should be able to be capable of doing this. She had the petition, the ability to speak to the chairman of the board and get her opinion about what she feel, and she decided not to. And, and not put it on that letter because it was directed to her. I disagree with that decision. That's, the planning board should not be the say-all for this. It is simple, they are forced to do it by DEM. They proposed it what fit for them. Of course, they're gonna propose how it fit for them, but it doesn't mean that we need to force it back in cost. And even if they lose, we're gonna lawyers, this is all waste of time and money. It's gonna happen, that's how it fits, DEM approves it, what are we doing?
Joel, would you like to be heard on how you're feeling?
Yeah, I actually agree with George on this one. They had it all approved and they are now being told that they have to make a change. So that's, that's out of their control. And I, I don't disagree with the, the planning board's questioning. But I think we should just, we should just approve it.
You mean grant the appeal?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, is anybody prepared to make a motion? Lisi, you're the most well-read on this, I think it should be you.
I wouldn't go that far. I, I may have read it like five times, but I know, I'm not sure that qualifies me. But, um, I feel that, I don't really feel like the facts are that in dispute, other than characterizations. I mean, I don't think that DEM required the petitioner to put the, the wastewater or the stormwater management, um, plan on the commercial lot solely. That was simply what was submitted to them. And they approved it based on the, the standards that were in effect. I, I mean, I don't think, so I have questions about whether DEM required them to put it there. I, I don't agree with that. And I don't think it comes down to whether we have to reach a constitutional issue about whether the, the statutes denies due process because it's vague, because it doesn't have the definition of what's a minor or a major subdivision. Because I think that by the language of the regulation, that it clearly gives the administrative officer the discretion whether to refer to the planning board in light of these changes or not. So I don't think we have to crawl through the major and minor decisions. I think that the regulation is couched in the terms "may" and not "shall". And I agree with Wendy, there, there are so many cases in, from our court that, that talk about the difference between "may" and "shall", ad nauseam, ad nauseam. You know, I don't think we can ignore what the comprehensive town plan is and what it was back in 2008. And I don't think, um, as well as I, as much as I appreciate that DEM is responsible, you know, delegated by the state to be the sole person in charge, or the sole group in charge of management of stormwater, it still has to comply with the standards and regulations and zoning ordinances. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive. So, um, based on this record, and I honestly feel that there are arguments, very fair arguments in, in both positions. And I commend the petitioner for, you know, a very good brief and a very cogent argument for its position. I would move to affirm the administrative officer and refer this matter back to the planning board.
Second.
Dave Collins, second. All those in favor?
We need a roll call, please.
Roll call. Myself, David Collins, Wendy, was your hand up?
Correct.
Uh, and Jennifer Hilton, all those seeking to grant the appeal? George? Mr. Alzbeck dissents. So that is a four-to-one decision to deny the appeal. Is there anything else I need to put on the record? Mike?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That takes us to the matter of the special use permit. And in light of our decision, I don't know what you want to do, Mr. Dorsey. If we want to start it or we want to reman-, revan to the, the planning board. Obviously, you have your, um, the option of whether you want to appeal our decision or to go back to the planning board. But I think the way it is now, that the, we need the benefit of the planning board's review of this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the, the second request pursuant to the prior special use permit that was granted, any modifications of the plan require this board's approval, independent of the planning board. So we'll, we'll proceed as, as, as the board would, would like us to. We're certainly prepared to proceed in asking for consideration of approval. It is a separate approval under the special use permit, understanding that the decision that was just reached or if the, if the board is not inclined to move forward with a, with a vote on consideration of our petition, I would just ask the board to hold the petition in abeyance until we can go back to the planning board. But we are prepared to, to move forward if the board is prepared.
I mean, I think in light of our finding, it makes sense to hold it in abeyance. But I'll, I'd ask Mr. Marcelo to weigh in on this and obviously get the, get a roll call to see what the remainder of the board wants to do.
I, I guess, John, and this is up to you. I agree with your characterization that it is, it is separate. But i- if, depending on where you go with this, if you're going back to the planning board from a procedural perspective, doesn't it just make sense to get an approved plan from them before you come back for the special use permit? Because we don't know what that plan may look like. It may be the same, maybe you might get approved for the very plan that you submitted today. I just don't know, we don't know that yet. Like, and I guess, how, how do we grant a special use permit or get advice on a special use permit when we don't know what the plan looks like?
I, I don't think that the zoning board has to have advice from the planning board to make that decision under the special use permit. But if, if a roll call may be helpful, if the, if the zoning board's preference is that they, they would like that decision first. I'm not, I won't press the issue if the zoning board does want that decision first. I just, it is two separate issues. And if the board wants to take it up as such, I'll, I'll present it.
And I, and I agree with John's characterization, it really is up to the board. I guess, just for time and money purposes, I would just say that if we would continue this to a date certain, we can continue to continue it till we get, you know, till this can get, gets ripe again. So we don't have to keep on advertising it, that would probably be my bet, the best way to do it.
How does the board feel about this?
Comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, the decision that we submitted in, what was it, 2009 or whatever? One of our findings was that the, was the fact that the planning board had approved the, the plan. And now we don't have an approved plan. So it, it just seems to me that we, we can't really proceed until we have an approved plan.
I, I just, I agree with that. I, I don't know how, Jennifer Hilton?
Oh, I completely agree. I think we would kind of be wasting our time at this point until we have a, a set of approved plans to even be dwelling on this for, for too long.
Wendy, how do you and your dog feel about this?
It's the only way to keep him from sounding like your dog, is to let him climb all over me. I would feel more comfortable if we heard this special use after there was a, a plan, just like David said. I'm in agreement with all of you.
George?
Just make a motion to table it for the next, whenever the planning board was approved.
I'll, I'll make a motion to hold the matter in abeyance until we receive a, a plan from the planning board and know where to go from there.
We just continue to the, can we, can we continue to the next zoning board meeting? Just so we can, we don't have to worry about the advertise, we'll put it on the record. I don't know what that would be.
Is that what you'd like, Dorsey?
I, I think it might make sense to do it for two months, because there's no way we're gonna deal with this on December 2nd.
Right.
Put it down for the January meeting?
We need the date.
Do you have a date for the January meeting? Be the first Wednesday in January, right?
The 6th.
Okay. We'll continue this to January 6th? And?
I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Roll call. Dave Collins, yes. Myself, yes. Jen, yes. Wendy?
Yes.
George, yes, okay. Um, so that carries, we'll continue this till January 6th. And I can tell you, if there's, um, Mr. Dorsey, if there's nothing before us on the 6th, we will simply, you know, continue this until the planning board has, has acted on it, if that's acceptable to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, there, there is a person, Joanna Ross, who has her hand up to speak. I don't know exactly on what, but just maybe we'll let her in just so we can.
The Q and A here says, "I'm a community member, could I add my thoughts?"
Well, I don't think it's appropriate to have public comment on the matter of the, the appeal. Plenty of words.
Right, you're correct. I wasn't sure she had some other issue, but exactly, this is, you know, the board has made his decision now on both issues. Continued one and denied, denied the appeal on another. So there really is no, there's no rule, rule for public.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible that she had her hand before that and we missed it?
No, I mean, she wouldn't have an opportunity, she has no standing to speak anyway. This is, it's a closed appeal and we didn't take, she would have an opportunity to speak on a special use permit, but we didn't even get there yet.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
I would encourage her to, uh, to continue to express her interest, but I don't think it's appropriate at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very interesting. So we're back to find the agenda. We have, we have the, some administrative matters. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the November 4th minutes that, that Ms. Ferrera has prepared?
I make a motion to approve the minute.
Second. Uh, David Collins, second. All those in favor? Roll call.
George, yes.
David, Lisi, George, Jennifer, and Wendy. So the minutes are approved. And, um, so the, we will, we are adjourned as the appeals, planning board of appeals, we're adjourned as the zoning board of review. And I guess, is there anything else? Any new matters that we need to take up tonight?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Well, I just have, I have one question that I, or one new matter that I do feel is relevant to bring up. And that is our December meeting, which was going to be a hybrid meeting. In light of the COVID mess we find ourselves in, I think we really need to revisit whether we're gonna have a, um, a hybrid meeting. And I think that the governor is gonna be making some directive, I mean, relatively soon. So, um, when do we have to submit our agenda for the December meeting?
So both of the, well, we have to submit it online, the 48 hours in advance. But both of the matters were continued, so we didn't have to do a legal notice. So it's really just basically making a decision by the Friday before.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want to see the town go to the expense or the party go to the expense of having to handle a, um, a hybrid meeting. And yet I continue to feel that public comment on that particular petition is extremely valuable. And I also feel that there's a lot of people that might not be able to be heard if it's done on Zoom.
I agree 100% with that.
So shall we just play it by ear? Or how, how, Michael, how do we?
I think we should just play it by ear for now. I mean, Chris and I, we're, we're, we're gonna be having conversations with the league of cities and towns in the governor's office this week. So we'll have a better understanding. But, you know, we might, we'll, we'll figure it out. Again, all the, all the limits so far have been social gatherings. They haven't been government meetings. This is not considered a social gathering, even though it's fun to see people in their homes and with their dogs. But this is not a social gathering. So we'll, we'll figure that out as we get closer.
I mean, I really, I, I'm very concerned about the public health issues that surround this pandemic and how things are getting a lot worse than they were a month ago, or that decision.
We'll wait to hear from Chris and Michael after they talk to people, we could always set the dates later on.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else? Seeing nothing? George, you made a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
I second it. All those in favor? Uh, roll call. Myself, Dave.